... School District Board of Trustees to order. Let the records show that a quorum of members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of the meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Leading us in our invocation will be Mr. Gerald Irons, and in our pledge of allegiance will be Mr. Bruce Tough. Let's stand. Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this wonderful day and for this great accomplishments of our school district. We thank you for all of our graduating seniors. We pray that they continue their success and they pursue their life's dreams and ambitions, and that they will apply what they have learned. We thank you for the productive five years that Bruce Tough has spent serving our district. We wish him continued success as he moves on to other community commitments. Continue to bless our board and the many judicious decisions we make, and we pray that our district's accomplishments will be continued in the future. As I close, please be with Senator Ted Kennedy and his family every minute and every second as he fights for his life. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Hey, can I have my girls come forward to help me with the pledge? Come up. They do this every morning if I need some help. All right. Please join me as we honor our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, our state flag.
I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the league, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Irons, and thank you, Tough Clan.
Thank you, Mr. Irons.
You're welcome.
Okay, Agenda item 2A, Dr. Stockton.
With your permission, Dr. Brown, I'd like to skip to 2B. We have someone who's going to be recognized under 2A on their way.
Okay.
So if it's okay, we'll skip to special district recognition. We're excited tonight to recognize the top two graduates of each school. And here to introduce those very special young people is Miss Drummond. Miss Drummond?
Good evening, Dr. Brown, Dr. Stockton, and members of the board. Each year, the high schools in Conroe Independent School District select the top two ranking students of their graduating class. This is determined by the highest two grade point averages at the end of the third marking period of the senior year. The grade point averages are weighted dependent on the level of rigor of the courses taken throughout their high school careers. Students will be recognized for attaining the honor of being one of the top two graduates of their senior class. And tonight, we have Dr. Anne Snyder helping us with our awards. And we're going to, I would like to recognize the high school principals as we do this. From Hawk Alternative High School, the principal is Joanne Bacon. And our honorees are Jonathan David Swift. And as you come up. From Caney Creek High School, the principal is Mrs. Trish McClure. And we are honoring Kaylee Michelle Carter. We're also honoring Stephanie Deep Nguyen. From Conroe High School, our principal is Mr. Mike Crowell. We also have with us Dr. Mary Jo Parker from the Academy of Science and Health Professions. We are honoring Jamie Neville. We are also honoring Lathan Henderson. Our principal of Oak Ridge High School is Mr. Tommy Johnson. Our honorees are Erica Winterer. The Woodlands College Park High School principal, Mark Merle, and Dr. Susan Capri from the Academy of Science and Technology, Adam Nguyen. From the Woodlands High School, principal Greg Colson, our honorees are Yafee O'Yang. And Adriana Carolina Gamboa Ayala. Students, we want to also recognize your parents because we know that without them, a lot of things would not have happened. You wouldn't be here, for one. So if you're a parent of these students, would you please stand and let us recognize Dr. Snyder, did you want to say something?
On behalf of the Board of Trustees and Dr. Stockton, it is with great pleasure to recognize each of you this evening. Your academic excellence is to be applauded, and we are so excited for your future endeavors. I think it might be interesting to not only the board members and administration, but also to the audience to share what your plans are with regard to furthering your education. And want to go ahead and start?
Okay, I'm going to, um, my, I mean, and I'm going to, right. I'm going to, and I plan on majoring in civil.
He missed. He's still here.
I'm going to Rice University.
I'm not sure where I'm going. Uh, I'm being a doctor.
I'm going to go to MIT.
I'll be attending UTE, and I'll be majoring in biohazard.
And if we could start, Ms. Ayala, with you. Turn around and know the board, and Dr. Stockton would like to shake hands. And congratulations, each of you.
Congratulations. Good luck. Good luck. Congratulations. Congratulations. I feel like I spent the week with you.
Congratulations. You have other offers with UTE? Congratulations. Congratulations. Great job. 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 Congratulations. Nice to meet you.
Nicely done, Dr. Snyder.
Thank you. I'm glad I hit you right. That's, I tried to, thank you.
Okay, Dr. Stockton, assuming that A is not here, let's move on to 2C.
Okay, if I could have your attention, please, we'll move on to 2C.
And those of you who came just for that, if you feel free, don't feel like you have to stay for the whole thing, feel free to leave. I'm sorry, I thought I was loud enough, Dr. Heinz. Okay, Dr. Stockton.
Okay, we're going to skip down to 2C. We're still waiting on one of our recipients for the Arbor Day awards. 2C, we have, I believe, a first in our school district. And here to introduce our recipient is Mr. Mark Merle, principal of the Woodlands College Park High School. Mr. Merle?
Dr. Brown, members of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Stockton. It is with great pleasure that I stand before you tonight to recognize the Woodlands College Park High School's first state champion, Heather Steinbauer. Heather is the daughter of Mark and Lisa Steinbauer and coached by Henry Garza. Heather is on our varsity tennis team, playing in the number-one spot throughout the year, and compiled a 34-1 record. During district play, she did not lose a game, and during regional and state tournaments, she only lost one set. She is currently ranked 23rd in the nation and number one in Texas. Heather captured the 5A State Girls Tennis Singles Title a few weeks ago, becoming the first state champion in College Park School history. Heather will be attending Vanderbilt University in the fall on a full athletics scholarship. Ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Heather Steinbauer and Coach Henry Garza.
Well, this is quite a distinction for our school district, and we are very honored at your accomplishment, Heather. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, we want to recognize you, Heather Steinbauer, Woodlands College Park High School, 2008 State Champion, UIL Class 5A Girls Tennis Singles.
Are her parents in the audience?
Yes. Is Mark and Lisa here? Lisa, hi, please stand behind every successful state champion. It's a great mother. I was called by Lisa Garrison, and she said, "Make sure that I mentioned that Heather went through Lamar Gerald." And then went to the tennis academy, but you, did you go through Wilkerson as well and Knox? And then came back, came back in her true feeder zone to go to College Park. And why don't you come up here and tell us where your college plans are, what you plan on doing, and why you lost a few games in that final set? I can't believe it. Yeah, the one loss. Come, please, please, Heather, please, come on. Why you lost? Was it, well, I didn't know how many you lost. You lost a few games in that final set. I know you took straight sets in the, in all of them, you took straight sets, but I think, how did that happen? Well, once again, we want to congratulate Heather and Coach Garza. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Great job.
Congratulations, ma'am. Great job for you.
Congratulations.
Dr. Stockton, 2D?
2D, another very special award for an incredible accomplishment. Here to introduce our recipient is Mr. Greg Colson, principal of the Woodlands High School.
Dr. Brown, Dr. Stockton, members of the board, it is with great pleasure that I stand before you to introduce a very special young lady and her coach. You know, it's not very often that you get an opportunity to win a state championship, but to do it as a sophomore with the opportunity to come back two more times and do it is quite a special accomplishment. So this time, I'd like to introduce our head girls' track coach, Noel Hanson, who will introduce our champion.
I have a lot of things I'd like to say about Sarah, but we'll try to keep it brief. But, you know, Sarah, it really had a wonderful cross-country season and did a lot of wonderful things. And unfortunately for her, her probably worst meet of the year was a state meet where, and I would say worst, I think she fell down at the start and can't got back up, and I think she had a top-20 finish. But she kind of, I think, used that as a bit of motivation going into track season. And we have a fairly storied track program, and she came in from the get-go and ran the fastest time in the state in a practice meet, and was able to back that time up numerous times throughout the season. She went on to district, won the district championship in the mile and the two-mile, went on to regionals, and won both those mile and two-mile championships. Went on to state two Saturdays ago and won the state championship running 10:42 and having won by about nine seconds over her closest competitor. She had a great season. She's a wonderful person to work with. Came back later that evening and got third in the mile. But it's just kind of a great story of working hard, setting great goals, and then being able to accomplish it. And I feel very, very fortunate to get to coach Sarah and be around her, and she's a wonderful teammate as well. So I don't know what else I can say about her, just a great person, Sarah Andrews.
Coach, we'd also like to thank you for all you do for children, and we appreciate you as well. Sarah, this is your night, and on behalf of the Board of Trustees and Dr. Stockton, we'd like to recognize you, Sarah Andrews, the Woodlands High School, 2008 State Champion, UIL Class 5A Girls Track 3200-Meter Run. And before I, why don't you come over here? And let me give you. I just have a favor that Dr. Stockton asked me to ask you. He's been, you know, trying to tune up his running a little bit. He would like to meet you wherever you start this summer and run with you, or at least for the first 100 yards or so. So could you let him know when you go by to shake everybody's hand where exactly you start? We're not interested in where you finish, because none of us can stay with you unless we have a golf cart, but we congratulate you, ma'am. Also, we'd like to recognize her parents tonight.
Congratulations, Coach. Great job.
Well done.
Yeah. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you for all you did. Congratulations. And outrunning.
Congratulations.
Did you want to say a few words?
Please, and my apologies for not asking you to.
I'd just like to thank my mom and coach, and my dad, too, who's not here, but they've just done so much work this season to get me where I'm at right now, and I just couldn't have done it without them. So I'm just blessed to have such a good family and coach, so.
Dr. Stockton, 2E?
We are actually ready for 2A.
Oh, we are? Okay, then let's go to 2A.
2A is our special district recognition for some very special younger students. And Dr. Kathy Gibson is here to introduce those students.
Dr. Brown, board members, and Dr. Stockton, we have seven very outstanding intermediate school students that we'd like to introduce to you this evening. Our school district has participated in the Montgomery County Beautification Association Arbor Day Poster Contest for many, many years. This year, we had our fifth graders compete against 1,510 posters, and 23 schools in Montgomery County participated. And for lack of a better phrase, we swept the contents. I would like to introduce to you, we had seven winners. One area winner, which is Eric Cruz Sokovia from Traddis Intermediate, principal Mrs. Jeanne Galorio. Eric, would you come forward, please? We have Gavin Johnson from Dirichan Elementary, and Gavin could not be with us this evening. His principal is Mrs. Debbie Jones. Third area winner was Brooke McDougall from Wilkerson Intermediate, principal Mrs. Marie And our fourth area winner is Ashley Ortiz from Vogal Intermediate, Mr. Ken Sharples, principal, and Ashlyn could not be with us this evening. Then we had Mr. Ignacio Garcia, who not only was an area winner, but was also a regional winner from Tough Elementary, Mrs. Julie English, principal. And we have Mrs. Karina Rivera from Mitchell Intermediate, principal Mrs. Paula Klepeski. She was also an area and regional. And last but not least, we have a very outstanding young gentleman from Grangerland Intermediate who swept the entire state with his original piece of artwork, Mr. Michael Eponnet, who was an area regional and is the Texas state winner.
On behalf of our Board of Trustees and Dr. Stockton, I want to congratulate all of you. As fifth graders, you really set the bar high, and we know that you're going to be very successful in CIIS, but you represent our district very well, and we congratulate you. Would all the parents of the students here, if you're here tonight, please stand so we can give you a hand? We attribute all of your success to your parents and to the dedication that they instill in you. Congratulations, and would you please start with Dr. Stockton and shake our hands? Thank you.
Hey, congratulations. Thank you for making us so proud. Thank you so much. We're very proud. Congratulations.
Congratulations. So young man. I don't think. Congratulations. Very much. Congratulations. Wow. Congratulations. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
And if we wanted to see that artwork, where would we see it?
If we wanted to see that piece of artwork, the original right now is in Nebraska, and it will compete against the nation. There were three prints made. One, you could see at Wood Forest Bank on Davis. One is, will be, is on display at Grangerland Intermediate, and the third print belongs to the Eponnet family.
Okay, Dr. Stockton, 2E?
2E, we're here to recognize some very special employees in our school district, and our first set of recognitions are going to be introduced by Debbie Zamanik.
Dr. Brown, Dr. Stockton, and the board, it's just a thrill for me to be here to introduce the four outstanding managers that we have, and they were selected from four regions in our district. They strive for excellence, each one of these. They were selected because they had era-free food production reports, 100% on their health inspections, their participations all increased, and they kept their inventory and their budgets in line. So they were definitely outstanding for us. So we would like to recognize them. We do have some awards going on in other schools in the district, so some of our award winners will not be here, but we have either their supervisor or their manager accepting it for them. So the first one is Tammy Long. Juanita Seidel, who is at another award ceremony, and her supervisor, Karen Pugh, will accept Barbara Poppenhusen from Travis. And Annette Reed from Conroe High. We also have four associates that we would like to recognize, and these employees were chosen because of their willingness to go that extra mile. They would take on another associate's job if that associate was absent. They had no problems helping training associates when they came in new, and they were always ready to be supportive of anything new that we were trying, and that was a lot. And they always had the customers feel special. So these were the ladies that were out there on the line and greeting our customers every day, and they were absolutely outstanding. The first one we'd like to recognize is Rhonda Finley from the Woodlands High School, and her supervisor, her manager, Juanna Gorski, will accept it for her. Joyce Tigner from Vogal. Frances Sayon, she's from Hawk. Shelley Bonifus from Caney Creek, and she will be receiving her award through her manager, Alita Rushin. She also is at an award ceremony.
Well, on behalf of the Board of Trustees and Dr. Stockton, I can't tell you how proud we are of all of you, and thank you for your service and your contribution to our students and staff each and every day. I know that your service and your smiling faces make a difference each day, so thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Yes. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you for everything you do. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thanks for coming to accept me. Thank you so much.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you, ma'am. Congratulations.
2F, again, we are going to recognize a very special group of people, and here to introduce those recipients is Sam Dobla.
Dr. Stockton, members of the board, it is my distinct pleasure to be able to introduce to you today a wonderful group of people that are really the backbone of transportation that has allowed us to do the jobs we do to get all of our students, faculty members, and kids to activities, to school, and back home again safely. The way we selected these individuals, I talked with the managers and asked them how, you know... The way we selected these individuals, I talked with the managers and asked them how, who's out there that's going the extra mile for transportation? And they provided me a list of names, and we reviewed the lanes, and actually came up with this small group of people, but like I said, very effective in what they do. I'd like to introduce Jenny Lichtenstein from South County. David Duzot, he's our assistant shopman for North County. He was a mechanic and recently promoted. Tammy Loser, she's a standby for our Woodlands Center. Kay Bridenthal, she's our field trip coordinator, and she coordinates all the trips in the Kent Meinhardt, he's not able to be here today, but Ms. Tuanas Salinas, his manager, will accept the award on his behalf. Juana Weinzel, she's our East County, or one of our East County monitors. Herman Reese, he is one of our Oak Ridge Transportation Center standby drivers. He does it all. And Shirley O'Neal, she's one of our standby monitors for North County. There's such a wide variety of things these folks do. Like I said, everything from helping students get to school safely to helping each other out. They help each other. They do fundraisers whenever another driver's in need or a monitor is hurting. They visit each other in a hospital. There's so much that they do for each other, and I can't thank them enough.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for a good job.
Well done. Thank you.
We appreciate it, Lord. Thanks for making us so proud. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. Well done.
Yeah. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for the good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for the good job.
Thank you.
Thank you for the good job.
We like it.
Congratulations.
Was Dr. Brown not going to let you come down here? He's folding you up, wasn't he?
Tonight? No. Oh. Congratulations.
Okay, before executive session. Okay. Dr. Stockton, I think I'm going to handle this next one myself. Let me...
Who put this on the agenda anyway? Huh? Who put this on the agenda?
Okay, we have a... Members of the board, we have a resolution honoring Mr. Tough. I'd like to read it, and then we'll ask for a motion in a second. A resolution to the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees recognizing Bruce C. Tough, J.D., outgoing member of the board, for his contributions to the Conroe Independent School District. Whereas Bruce Tough has provided five years of service on this Conroe ISD Board of Trustees, serving the children and patrons of the Conroe Independent School District; whereas Bruce Tough has served as vice and second vice president of the Conroe ISD Board of Trustees; whereas Bruce Tough has devoted hundreds of hours of his time volunteering for numerous Conroe ISD academic and extracurricular athletic activities; whereas Bruce Tough has been a strong community leader, having expressed invaluable support to the patrons and students of the Conroe ISD; and whereas Bruce Tough has made a significant impact on the education of Conroe ISD students. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Conroe Independent School District recognize and thank Bruce Tough for his contributions to the students, parents, staff, and constituents of the Conroe ISD, and wish him well in future endeavors. And hopefully, it's going to be passed and approved this 20th day of May 2008. Okay, I have a motion. Is there a second? Second, Dr. Snyder. All those in favor, raise your hand. Those close, nay?
You know, the last time... Well, I did hear Joby when Joby left. As I say, the last time that we did this, it was Rob Eisler, and I took Rob's seat, but Joby has also left, and then I forgot Alan as well. But I want to say a few words, and I had not prepared anything, but I was sitting here at the meeting, and then I realized I can't believe I'm leaving this. That's what's really shocking to me. I'm leaving this, which is something that I enjoy so very much and invested so much time in, and it means so much to me and then my young kids who are in the district. So I thought what I would do is I'd write something down, because I think it's good that I say this, because it's kind of a reflection back on the history of my service, and it's also a reminder of where our district was and where it's come to today. When I was elected in 2003, during the election, in fact, I'll relate a story. Rob said, "You ought to run for the school board," Rob Eisler, who held my seat. And he said, "The school district is in great shape. We have no problems. There's money in the bank, there's no lawsuits, and we have a great leader in our superintendent." And so during this two-month period, I mean, it was like the wheels were coming off the school bus. I mean, we were in the front page headline about every week in the newspaper. And when I got elected, Dr. Snyder called me, and called me either Saturday or Sunday and said, "Oh, by the way, you're starting on Tuesday." So not only did I get elected on Saturday, I was starting a month early. And that month, I think we met eight times. All the meetings, Mel and I made a count, and I forgot to count, but during that first year that we served, and it was almost a six-month, we added up that we'd already put in our three years of service. So it was that many meetings we had. The first meeting we had, I almost feel like I need to apologize to some of the administration. It was hard, because I'd heard a lot of things in the press, and I did not have the opportunity to meet the people in our district, which are all great, wonderful people. And so I had some preconceived notions and beliefs. And one, I think it was Darren Rice's first meeting that he had, and I'd made the motion not to approve any expenditures. Where's Darren? Is he still... There he is, right there. You remember that meeting, Darren? So, and it just, it kind of went downhill from there. But you know what happens is you learn on the job, and I did. I learned a lot. I learned a lot about education. Education is extremely complicated, and it's extremely challenging. And although I felt like I had read a lot, it didn't prepare me at all for the experience of serving on the school board. To where have we gone from here? The administration, I think the most significant accomplishment, I wrote some of them down, but the number one and the most significant accomplishment that I can say I took part of is when we were interviewing the superintendent candidates, and we had a list of candidates, and I looked at all of them. And as we went through the process, and I was interviewing the candidates, and we were... In fact, I remember going through one interview with one candidate about a salary, and she said that she wouldn't come to this district unless she was paid so much money and had a 7-0 vote. And I said, "Why would you disqualify yourself like that? Because I'm not voting for that salary." And you know, it was kind of like that period, but I talked to Dr. Stockton, and I said, "Why aren't you a candidate for superintendent?" Because I always look at who we have in place now and measure to that. And none of the candidates that I'd interviewed or even looked at measured or compared to Dr. Stockton. And fortunately, the whole board also felt that way, and Dr. Stockton was hired as our superintendent. And that was in 2003, and that was within months of me being elected as trustee. Since then, the whole administration has changed. At that time, we had Dr. Stockton, we had Jean, and it was a significant change. Kathy was at Aldine, and Chris was at Oak Ridge, and Gail was at Knox, and we had our human resource department in. But just to tell you what kind of transformation and change has occurred, also the principals at our school. All of our schools and our leadership, you've seen that quality and that improvement and that change, and that's attributed towards Dr. Stockton and the leadership. And I really feel that that is my most proudest accomplishment in selecting Dr. Stockton as superintendent and participating in that. Other areas that I wanted to address that I felt were needed in the school district that we had not looked at, and I had conversations with Dr. Stockton in the car, and you know, this is how, when we'd drive up to graduation, then I'd have my opportunity to share all of these wonderful ideas with Dr. Stockton. And it's amazing that after those car rides, and all of a sudden, I would see items appearing on the agenda, and he was implementing the good ideas. Not all of them, but he would implement the good ideas. And that's the quality of a great leader in Dr. Stockton, and what it is to be a board member. A board member really comes up with the policy. And fortunately, you have a strong executive in Dr. Stockton who recognizes what's a good policy and a bad policy. And those good ones, he implemented, such as the changing of the salaries of the teachers, realigning those. And I made that a priority, and I talked to Dr. Stockton about it. He says, "We're going to get it done," and we did. We realigned all the salaries, increased our salaries for our teachers, and made our district more competitive. Our audit committee, we started an audit committee, internal audit committee, which is like none of the other districts did it. Why should we do it? Well, it's now mandated by the legislature, and we did it years and years before the legislature even required that to be done. So we had an internal audit committee, and we've audited our construction department. We've audited the Moorhead Stadium and the cash receipts, all of our activity funds. I mean, these are all things that we implemented during this period of time that just makes us very distinct and separate from the rest of the districts. Our special needs programs, which was going through a massive amount of lawsuits and a lot of scrutiny, has all been just, it's just been changed the whole direction in the leadership in that area, and it's now an exemplary department. Our financing with Dan Cox, I mean, I can say that that is also one of the proudest accomplishments that the board has. We've dropped our rate to 52 cents, and I heard Tommy Williams speak at the legislative committee meeting and said, "If this isn't the only district, it is one or two that has the lowest tax rate implementation in the 52-cent decrease in the state of Texas." And we had an opportunity to not do that. We chose not to, but to return that money to the taxpayers, and that's another proud accomplishment. And along with the 2004 bond passage, which was pretty significant coming from a 2003 year of incredible controversy. But those are a few of the highlights that I remember, and I just wanted to mention those. And really, what that comes down to is the controversies that we faced and the challenges that we faced, I've got to attribute that this is one of the best group of people that I've ever worked with. And I've been in a lot of challenging situations in community service. And at the time that I came on to the Conroe Independent School Board, it was really not... It was something I wasn't expecting, but I was prepared for. And if it hadn't been for this great board working together to say, "You know what? We're not going to concentrate on the past, and we're not going to look at all of those issues. We're going to move forward, make it better, and do it for the children." And I think that's what makes this board so exemplary and so strong. And I can feel comfortable, and I can say, "Okay, I'm leaving, but I'm leaving the school district in such good hands," because you couldn't have any better people running the school district, this school district or any school district in the state of Texas or the nation than these people here. They're wonderful. They put the district above themselves. They always have. If there's an issue between any of us, that is put aside, and we keep our children first, and our parents, and our teachers, and our taxpayers. Now, people have asked me, "Why are you leaving?" Well, I'm leaving for another challenge. I didn't intend to leave. I did not want to leave. I wanted to stay here. I feel like my contributions, I could still contribute. But when I chose to run for the Woodlands Township, it was a time in the Woodlands where the whole era of governance is changing, is changing into a city. And I'd been working on that as well for a number of years, and I felt that that was a calling that I needed to participate in, so I ran for the election, hoping that I could stay in complete my last term on the school board, but then realizing I couldn't. So I had to make the decision to step down, and that's what I did. It's not an easy decision. It's with great sadness that I'm doing this, but I look forward to the challenge in the Woodlands, and I think it'll be almost a similar challenge that I faced in 2003 when I came on the Conroe Independent School District. It's almost starting to shape up like that now. I can just feel it. I went to a few meetings, and I went, "Oh, boy, here it goes again." It's a rewind. So I will... I feel comfortable in leaving, and I'm leaving for another challenge in my life. Okay, in conclusion, thank you for letting me speak. I enjoyed that. Mel said...
I haven't been able to stop you.
Mel, I said, "Mel, do I have an opportunity to speak?" And he says, "How am I going to stop you?" You know? And they said that since I wasn't at one of the meetings, the board efficiency has gone up, and the time has decreased. My... Let me end by introducing my family, who has been a great, tremendous support for me. I'll start with my father, Colson Tough Elementary School, right here. Colson served on the school board, and every time he comes in here, he goes, "I never had it this good." And you know, he was in the old administration building, and I think he served under two super... Or served with two superintendents. And so, you know, the times have changed, but the issues are the same, Colson. I just want to tell you that. And with Colson is Ruth Grazer. Ruth, thank you for being here. My... I'm going to start with my children. Madison Tough. Madison, please stand. Madison is a sophomore at College Park High School. She's in the academy. She's a junior varsity soccer player, and she is exemplary. She's a wonderful student, and she's the oldest, so she takes care of her other little sisters. Next is Tara. Tara Tough. Tara is a cheerleader at McCullough Junior High School, and she was just, I guess, re-selected for her next year, and she's entering eighth grade at McCullough. Abby is a third grader at Colin Powell. Now, I want to tell you, there's a legacy in our family for third graders. They have to all score commendable on their tax tests. That's the history. That started with Madison and with Tara. And so I called Lisa Garrison before the meeting to check on your tax scores, and you made it. She made commendable. And our... My little baby, Sidney Tough, who is a kindergartner at Powell. They tell me that she has set a number of records as a kindergartner, and that everyone knows her, including all the teachers. So that's... And their wonderful mother, my wonderful wife, Diana Tough, who allows me to do what I do in the community. Thank you.
We know how much she commits.
Well, Diana's been extremely patient, very forgiving, and especially those 1:00 in the morning to 12:00 midnight meetings that we had, and thank God we don't have them anymore, but we had many of them, and she didn't know what I'd gotten myself into during that first month. But I wanted to say in parting that it has been truly, truly an honor to serve as a trustee in the Conroe Independent School District. It is one of the greatest honors I've had in my life. I will never forget anybody, including all the children and teachers and administrators and parents that I've met, and especially... Well, Diana's been extremely patient, very forgiving, and especially those 1:00 in the morning to 12:00 midnight meetings that we had. And thank God, we don't have them anymore, but we had many of them, and she didn't know what I'd gotten myself into during that first month. But I wanted to say, imparting, that it has been truly, truly an honor to serve as a trustee in the Conroe Independent School District. It is one of the greatest honors I've had in my life. I will never forget anybody, including all the children and teachers and administrators and parents that I've met, and especially you wonderful school board members. Thank you, and it's been an honor serving.
You know, last meeting, I don't know if you know it or not, but we filled your position on the Finance Audit Committee and on the Legislative Committee. The one position you're leaving vacant that we didn't fill, other than your actual seat on the board, is who do I exchange friendly barbs with?
I don't know, you never exchange friendly ones with me.
Maybe I won't get in trouble as much. I remember early on, we were rezoning, and you and I were, at those times, were also thinking about what we'd gotten ourself into. And we'd rezoned South County, and all, we got emails and phone calls and everything, and hundreds of them. We started rezoning up here in the north part of the county. Keep in mind, I had run on the camp, my campaign on the fact that I wanted the north and south part of the county to get along, and that we would represent the entire district. And we were rezoning up here, and Bruce said, "Well, I didn't get very many emails on this." And I guess he thought because I lived in North County, if they were going to complain, they would complain to me. And he looked down at me and said, "Did you get very many mail?" I said, "No." He said, "I wonder why." And I forgot we were being colorized. And I said, "Bruce, we're just nicer up here." I did get a lot of emails after that, but they were all from the South County. So, and we want to recognize you and give you something besides the certificate, which, I mean, the resolution which will be signed by everybody awaiting for signature from Linda. But I want to read this to you. "Conroe Independent School District, committed to excellence, presented to Mr. Bruce Tough in recognition for dedicated service and commitment to excellence. Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees, 2003-2008." Congrats. We deal with a lot of controversial issues from time to time, and she didn't take those off. She took off tonight, and I got to officiate when we're giving out all these awards. I want to thank her for that kindness to me. And with that, Dr. Stockton, item three.
Before we go to 3H, I would like to recognize Kathy Clark. Kathy has done a great job choreographing all of the awards tonight. 2H is citizens' participation.
Oh, I'm sorry, 2H, okay. This is the time when we hear from citizens. Madam Board Secretary, has anyone signed up to address the board? Okay. Before we call them up, let me point out that the next 30 minutes on the agenda this evening has been designated for public participation for patrons who signed up to address the board in accordance with board policy, BED. Keep in mind that this portion of the meeting is not the appropriate means for bringing complaints for which resolution is sought. Complaints must be addressed by following the appropriate policies and administrative procedures before they can be submitted to the Board of Trustees as an agenda item. Those who have registered to address the board will be limited to no more than five minutes for their presentation. Delegates of more than five persons must appoint one representative to represent their views to the board. Also, keep in mind that we cannot deliberate or take action regarding any subject that's not posted on the agenda, but it can, we can furnish specific factual information or cite existing policy in response to your inquiries. Madam Secretary?
That was a tough act to follow, but just a few personal thoughts. I just want to thank Bruce Tough, the outgoing trustee for the Board of Trustees for the school district, and on behalf of the students, parents, staff, and the constituents, for your hard work and service. Your skills and hard work have truly made you an asset to this school district and to the board. And for those of us who are fortunate enough to live in the Woodlands Township, welcome aboard, and we're fortunate that you're part of our leadership team to lead us into our new form of self-governance. Thanks, Bruce.
Thank you. Now, Dr., oh, is there nothing? Okay. Now, Dr. Stockton, item three.
Item three is a consent agenda. You've had these items for a while to look at, and I would submit that to you for...
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Motion passes. Item four, curriculum and instruction, Dr. Stockton.
If I, may I ask the board to allow me to move Human Resources Report up to this moment?
I have no objection.
I agree. Okay, I'd like to move the Human Resources Report up, and item number 9A is the naming of the principal for Bush Elementary School. As you know, and I've shared with you before, that the recommendation of the principal is the most important thing that I do, because the principals are the ones that work with the campuses on a daily basis. They recommend the hiring of the wonderful teachers that we have. So I take it with great seriousness when I make a recommendation for a principal. And at this time, I'd like to recommend to you that we name Judy Mills the principal of Bush Elementary School.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand.
Can I, can we also get Mr. Tough's raising of his hand?
Mr. Tough, are you raising your hand? Okay. Are you waving goodbye or voting? Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Could we get her to come and...
Judy, if you'll come up and address the question.
I'm thrilled and deeply honored that you have selected me to fill that position as the new principal at Barbara Bush Elementary. I've actually been there since the opening of Bush in 1996. Last year, we celebrated a decade of excellence with the former First Lady Barbara Bush attending a celebration that we had there at the school. Most recently, we were privileged to have our current First Lady, Laura Bush, and her daughter Jenna, visit our school and read their most recent book to some of our students. For the past 12 years, we have seen changes. We have seen students come and go. We have seen changes in curriculum, assessment. But one thing that has never, ever changed at Barbara Bush Elementary is our mission, and that is to provide an excellent education for all students. Although I have big shoes to fill following two great leaders, first Becky Holland and then, of course, Nancy Sparks, as principal, I plan to continue and build upon the traditions that have been established and the excellent program that has already been established at Bush. I would like to thank Dr. Stockton and you, the board members, for allowing me to fill that position as principal at Barbara Bush Elementary. I would also like to thank the Bush staff and my friends for their words of kindness and support in waiting for the new principal to be named. And last but not least, I would like to thank my family. I would like to thank them for believing in me and their support in my endeavor to pursue this position. I'd like to introduce my husband, James, and my daughter, Jamie. Once again, thank you very much.
We would like to shake your hand, too.
I know you really don't have a boat out there. I saw you ready.
Okay, Dr. Stockton, if we'll finish the Human Resources section with B.
I'd like to recommend that you approve the Human Resources Report as amended that's in front of you.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, now back to item four, curriculum and instruction, Dr. Stockton.
Great. Item four A is the Science Laboratory Grant Program Approval. Mrs. Drummond.
Good evening, Dr. Brown, Dr. Stockton, and members of the board. House Bill 2237 created the Science Laboratory Grant Program to provide competitive grants to school districts for the purpose of constructing or renovating high school science laboratories where the existing district labs are insufficient in number to comply with the curriculum requirements imposed for the recommended and advanced high school programs. We are applying for the grant to fund the construction of a new addition at the Woodlands College Park High School. The formula indicates that we qualify to apply for the funding of three 1,400 square foot science laboratories at $200 per square foot. The amount of that grant is $840,000. And just so you know how this works, we actually investigated trying to get funding to pay for the science laboratories at Conroe High School, but they didn't fall in the timeline of the grant. So we have mentioned that to our legislators, that we didn't think that was fair. But anyway, we are applying. The order of the grants, the TEA will order them according to property wealth per student in average daily attendance, and they will begin with the lowest property wealth and then continue until all the money is distributed. So we may not be in the money, but we may. So we decided we might as well try for it. So what we would like for you to do this evening is to approve our move forward to continue with this application for the grant.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, well, I'm going to have to ask my usual questions. Is there any requirement?
No.
Okay, there is none. Okay, you answered the other one when you, during your discussions. John, did I hear you? Ms. Tussman?
That was my question.
Okay.
And just for clarity, we're going to build the science rooms.
Right.
All right. Any others questions? Any discussion? All right, those in favor signify by raising your hand. Those opposed, like saying, okay, motion carries. Dr. Stockton, four B.
Four B is a preliminary tax results for fifth and eighth grade mathematics. This is Gibson and, oh, sorry, Dr. Gibson and Mrs. Drummond.
Dr. Brown, board members, and Dr. Stockton, this evening, we'd like to present to you the preliminary math tax scores. This is the first opportunity that our students have to take the tax math assessment. And in keeping with our past successes, you can see that in 2008, we have outperformed the state with our students in grade five taking the English tax assessment with a 91% Met standard. Now, remember that they took the second, those that had to take the second try, retested on May 13th, and we should receive those scores back by June 2nd. And Mr. Tough, you asked us five years ago to concentrate on our bilingual ESL program, and we present to you again this evening. This is the least amount of students we've ever tested in grade five Spanish tax. This only represents 28 students. It is seven less students than last year this time, and we are continuing to make progress in this area. And Bruce, you've always held us to a very high standard, and we appreciate that, and you know I will miss you.
Thank you, and I'm going to miss you.
In grade five, our English and Spanish students combined, our overall performance for Conroe, 90%, which we have clearly outperformed the state, and you can see that four-year trend there, and that the state is somewhat flat, and we continue to perform strongly. So great success for all of our students and teachers throughout our fifth grade classrooms.
Good evening, Dr. Brown, Dr. Stockton, and members of the board. We also are thrilled about our math...
Do you have a question?
He can wait.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
We are thrilled about our scores in math in our eighth grade. This is the first year for our eighth graders to be under Student Success Initiative. We have outperformed the state since 2004. The one thing I will point out is in 2007, our 83% was our final percentage. Our 85% this year is based on our first test. So we anticipate that that percentage will go up after the second test.
Score tries total, though? Or are there only two that count in the number?
Two count in the number.
Thank you.
The students will have their third shot at the test if they don't pass this July.
But it doesn't count in the final?
No, it does not. So we only, we get two shots, but we're ahead of the game already this year. So we're very, very proud of our students and our teachers in the eighth grade. Many initiatives were taking place this year, and that's very obvious from the scores. So we're very pleased to share those with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right. Dr. Stockton, I believe you had requested that we move legal up now?
Yes, if we could, move the legal section up prior to administration. It makes a little more sense to do that.
Okay, why don't we start with item 10A then?
10A, Ms. Gladys, is the approval of interlocal agreement for joint use of facilities.
Thank you, Dr. Stockton. Dr. Brown, members of the board, we are requesting your approval of an interlocal agreement with the City of Conroe for joint use of several of our schools. Houston, Anderson, Runyon, Travis, Washington, Armstrong. This agreement arose out of the concern over the ending of the 21st Century Grant that's provided after-school programming at these campuses. We worked with the City of Conroe, they're going, they're wanting to provide after-school programming for the students, similar to what the YMCA does in many of our other schools. It'll be from after-school until about 6:00 o'clock, when parents can pick them up at an affordable rate for parents. And so, if you're able to share facilities and provide them facilities at no cost, they'll be able to provide that programming, similar to the Y, to the families of these particular schools. So we request your approval of this interlocal agreement.
Do I hear motion? Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any questions?
I just have one question. Are they, we, and it may be directed towards Dr. Stockton. We will not be using the city pool in any way whatsoever next year for the swim tanks, correct?
That is correct.
Everybody's looking at Sam.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's, yes, it's correct.
Do we have any other land usage agreements with the City of Conroe, for our schools or for their properties?
Well, I certainly have felt, like I said, we'll be getting top-of-the-tower usage.
With that exception, I'm talking about preliminary, prior to this. Do we spend any money for use of city properties, or do they spend any money for use of our properties, independent of this agreement right here, right now?
Nothing comes to my mind.
With the exception of the swimming pool, but not next year.
We also have playground, future playgrounds in the agreement to credit the city for putting future playgrounds in our elementary schools.
Very good, thank you.
Is that...
That answers my question, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Do I hear motion? Oh, wait, I had a motion, pardon me. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Okay, motion passes. Item 10B.
10B is the approval of engagement agreement with RBC Capital Markets. Miss Lutz?
Thank you, Dr. Stockton. As you know, we just passed a bond election, and with that, will come the sale of bonds, probably, tonight. And in... And in that regard, we need to have an agreement with our financial advisor. We renew it at the conclusion of every bond sale, or election that we've had, and this just sets out the terms we believe are very favorable. We, Mr. Cox, worked with them, and we are pleased with the terms of this agreement, and ask that you approve.
So moved, second. Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, I, or raise your hand? Opposed? Put?
I was thinking.
Okay, you're just slow down there, now. Okay, motion passes. Item 10C.
10C is stormwater detention easement agreements, Ms. Gladys.
Thank you, Dr. Stockton. As you know, we are purchasing a piece of property on which to build a new junior high in the Conroe feeder. Part of that agreement, we will have the detention facility on our property that will serve our site, as well as a subdivision that is located there, close to, and so this easement grants an access to that.
So moved. Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Uh, Dr. Stockton, 10D.
I'm gonna pull 10D off the agenda, that contract is not ready.
Okay, uh, then let's move to 10E.
10E is the approval order canvassing returns and declaring results of election for the May 10th, 2008 bond referendum, Mrs. Gladys.
Thank you, Dr. Stockton. Dr. Brown, at this point, I would ask that you nominate two members of the board to canvass the election returns, the bond election, and we will excuse ourselves to the board's results, and then hopefully bring back a recommendation regarding that.
Well, let's get something out of Bruce before he leaves.
I'm bad, I'm good at that, too, I'm good at counting.
Dr. Brown, I propose that Mr. Tough and Mr. Irons canvass the election.
Must be reading my mind out here. Okay, would you two gentlemen take care of that? Okay, if you would.
If you'll follow, Ms. Gladys.
Then we'll just wait. Oh, should we announce the... So that you won't be bored, those of you who do not know, John Husband is celebrating a birthday, and there's cake and punch in the back. So why don't you partake of that while we wait for the canvassing of the votes?
Sounds like a great idea.
Although, you just.
I get coffee.
Well, this will give them kind of a...
Don't go, don't go far.
Board members do not go far. You know, I think this was a test.
I'm sorry.
You moved us, you moved us up, didn't you?
We'll, he will give the report, you're gonna have to speak.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Tough.
Well, first of all, I want to, Gerald and I were actually working, and we were canvassing back there, so I think some interesting statistics that you need to know is that there are 130,733 registered voters in our school district. There were a total ballots cast of 11,117, and the election day ballots were more than the early ballots. The early ballots were 4,00747, and the election day were 6,370. And so the numbers, we actually come down less than what the ballots cast, so someone, some people who are voting chose not to vote in this election. So that's interesting that Gerald and I thought we'd point out. But the four ballots from our canvassing of all the precincts that were presented were 6,309, against were 4,128, for a total of ballots cast, or total that were ballots cast for the election were 10,437. So, Mr. President, I have a motion.
Okay.
The May 10th, 2008 schoolhouse bond election results, having been canvassed by quorum of the board, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the order canvassing the election returns and declare the results of the election to be 6,309 votes for and 4,128 votes against.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye, or raise your hand. Okay, none opposed, evidently, since everybody voted aye. Motion carries. Okay, let me see if I can figure out where we are after jumping around. I think we're in administration now. Five, five A. And thank you, Mr. Irons and Mrs. Tough for doing that for us. Okay, item five A, approval of GMP for the site clearing.
Okay, Mr. Burns, please.
Dr. Brown, Dr. Stockton, members of the board, we're asking the board to approve the GMP submitted by Duratech Incorporated in an amount of $2,394,660. The scope of this project will provide the clearing of approximately 65 acres for both Flex 12 and 14, the building pad, stormwater infrastructure, and the detention for the entire 186 acre site. This was actually part of the 2008, 2008 bond referendum.
Okay, for clarification purposes, this is part of the 186 acres, correct?
Yes, 65 of the 186, but we're doing the detention pond and infrastructure for the entire 186.
Okay, okay. Okay. So moved. Okay, have a motion? Did I hear a second?
Yes.
Okay, motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? Okay. Uh, item five B, approval of GMP for site clearing Flex 13, Dr. Stockton.
Again, we're asking the board to approve the GMP submitted by Duratech for the price of $538,032. This will be to clear approximately 15 acres for the new Flex 13 site, which will include the building pad and stormwater infrastructure. This, again, is part of the 2008 bond referendum.
And this is imperial, that's correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Do I hear motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion?
Somebody else asleep?
Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Uh, Dr. Stockton, item five C.
Is GMP for Wilkerson Corridor tile replacement, Mr. Burns?
We're asking the board to approve the GMP submitted by Ellisor Constructors in an amount of $219,476. This is to replace the existing carpet in the, all the corridors and base with a ceramic tile, which the board has approved several years ago, we start going with. This is part of the 2008 bond referendum.
So moved, second. Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Dr. Stockton, five D.
Five D is the design development for Conroe High, the Conroe High School renovations, Mr. Burns.
We're asking the board to approve the design development of the new Conroe High project. We're asking Mr. Ian Powell of PPK Architects to submit the presentation, and if he would introduce his colleagues.
Very good, thank you. Good evening, folks. Good evening, Dr. Brown, Dr. Stockton, members of the board. It's with great pleasure that we're here to bring to you one of the first pieces of the, of the 2008 bond. But I'd like to say at the beginning, it's sort of a daunting prospect to come up here and present to you on a night that's been filled with so many champions, national finalists, luminaries, and dignitaries, so, but it's also gratifying as a resident within the district to see those kind of achievements and accomplishments occurring in Conroe ISD, so our hats are off to you. Having said that, the, at hand, what we have at hand for, to present to you is one of eight projects which have delivery dates brought to you from your 2008 bond, which need to be presented to you very, very quickly in order to achieve the delivery dates for the projects. And this one is a little different than some of the other ones that have been brought to you in the past. As you know, in the Facility Planning Committee, that group endorsed and presented to you as a board campus improvements on almost every single one of your campuses. And so one of the components, of course, was Conroe High School, and within the 56 work tasks and items that were brought to you by teachers, by faculty, by staff, by administrators to do, there were a couple of components that had the potential to change the appearance of the building. And we knew it absolutely was not right to take action, move forward with those things, until we presented to you for, to ask your pleasure and how to proceed. So having set the stage, hopefully, with this presentation, we have a presentation that will shortly show. Frame of context, this is the aerial showing the existing conditions and the campus for Conroe High School. Contained within the 56 work tasks that were to occur as part of the campus improvements is our two new additions. The first component being a main entry and reconfiguring of the administrative area provide a more secure vestibule and locked area, much like you've done on many of your other campuses. At the same time, there was a second component that involved the installation or the construction of a concession stand area that would allow the mezzanine level for both of the gymnasiums on this campus to be linked at one level, so that they were not physically separate, and so that you didn't have to exit the building to go back to the other gymnasium. And so in looking at this, we realized that there was an opportunity to do many things. This is a quick blow-up of the administrative area showing a reconfiguration of the security vestibule, or the entry vestibule, and reconfiguring the reception, principal's office, assistant principal's office, bookkeeper, and working space as part of that. This is a floor plan showing the concession stand addition on the front of the two gymnasiums, and it allows the mezzanine to be linked from the right-hand, the viewer's right-hand side, existing gymnasium, to the viewer's left-hand side with a common lobby and a common concession that will support both and generate new entrances into that addition.
Get back up just a minute.
Yes.
Where is the existing concession stand in the pit?
I believe the space that, if you, if you see on the viewer's left-hand side where it says existing gymnasium, just above that, there are some rooms.
Right to the left of the word lobby.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thanks.
Yes, sir. This is a static rendering showing the overall campus.
Would you, yeah, would you go back to that, too?
Certainly.
That has, that, that is not, that's existing campus with the suggested renovation in front, if you'll notice the curvature of the front entry.
Exactly. This is a close-up showing the proposed elevation along this building. It's an interesting structure when you consider that you have pieces of this building which are vintage 1960s, and I think, if memory serves me, even earlier than that, and then you have some as recent as 2008. There's almost 1,000 feet of building footage occurring along 105 for Conroe High School.
With that new addition up here, what would the space accommodations be of?
None.
The, the purpose for that is to, and thank you for the segue, on 1,000 linear feet of
building, as you pass it either in a car, or as you walk up to it, there can be some concern, we have concerns, on your behalf, about how do you, how does a newcomer to the campus, a guest to the campus, realize in an instant, where's the front door? There are, there are other planning studies, data, which support that even from a security standpoint, one acronym being the Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, they say one of the things you do for a campus to make it more secure is provide a strong, a sense of entry, and a place of entry, so you have that wayfinding component is done for you and at a glance as people come to your campus.
So these would be openings, these, these openings will be not glass, or just be?
The opening shown above, I believe, are glass, and they open up into an area up above the entry space.
Okay.
This is a view looking at it from the other direction.
Okay. So, but will there be offices or rooms or something?
Yes, sir. No, no, sir, there are no physical spaces up top, that allows light to come into that entry space. It's not a second-floor level.
This is the new wing.
It's actually a fairly shallow addition, simply because there's not a lot of depth between your driveway right now and the front door to the campus.
This is the exterior side.
It is, now, it does do this.
Yeah, I know, but they pulled it out.
It does allow for the opportunity to push your entrance further out, so where the storefront doors that you enter right now, they're actually about eight feet further out, so that you can build that vestibule, and it does the same thing for building a reception space, which presently doesn't exist in that area.
For the security, for the security.
Yes, sir.
Wait, a question, it doesn't move the front entrance in either direction, still the same place, it just brings it out?
Absolutely correct. It doesn't move the entrance laterally, left or right, so the person who knows where to go now will know again where to go, same alignment.
But that enhances the security of the entrance?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. And it also segues, it segues nicely with the additional for the library on the left there.
Well, we were, you know, again, the challenge was, you have a building that has components from as early as even predating 1960s all the way to 2008. At the same time, at least from our point of view, there were elements that didn't quite coexist as nicely, and so when you, when you view the front door, and you view the concession area, it seemed like there was a great opportunity, since we were doing two things, that you had sort of locked into the campus improvements for this campus to, and we asked permission, we said, may we do some sketching for you, and with...
Let me jump in. We challenged them, the library is beautiful, culture of library, and with our, the LGI to the left, but that's the signature of that building, to use that architecture throughout the length of the building.
Yeah.
And when they say they came up with a few sketches, they're under, they're underreporting the number of sketches that came up, they've been wonderful to work with.
And it also dovetail nicely here to the right, the brown part of them.
Thank you for your comments, Dr. Stockton, thank you also, Mr. Irons, for that as well. And, you know, I firmly believe this, it's so hard to present to you something that is a static, two-dimensional representation, and so if I've come to the right segue for the next piece of this, there is an animation that we would like to show you.
You just show them off, eh?
And hopefully it will be to your liking. And this represents what we think the front of the school might look like if this is what you choose to proceed with.
It really ties those gems in nice, doesn't it?
And notice, that's a covered walkway.
The covered walkway, yeah, that's really nice.
That's a good thing. Gymnasium.
It gives the appearance that it was possibly built at the same time, but then in...
Thank you so much for that comment.
Here's a good view of it.
Very nice. And it has an unusual architecture there.
There you go, that's it.
You don't find another kind.
Oh, okay. Oh, we're not done?
No, this is it, there you go.
That's nice.
Mr. Powell?
Sir.
Thank you for the show.
Well, thank you very much for letting us bring this to you, and...
Let me just comment, first of all, let me just say, it's beautiful. I've known Conroe High School a long time the way it is, and, and I really think it looks great. I have but one concern.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and that is the outside walkway. Okay, we're building the entryway, we're renovating, for security purposes, several schools, okay? Right now, I'm not saying students don't get in the front parking lot on a daily basis during school hours, for whatever reason, and they're out there for, you know, parent pickup, or whatever the situation is. But I am concerned, not overly so, but I, I am a bit concerned about having that outside walkway as a regular access between the gymnasiums, as opposed to right now, the students go through the interior of the building, good, bad, or indifferent. And I, of course, have not spoken with Mr. Crowell about this, but I would have a question of he and his APs about the, right now, basically from the front doors back, Conroe High School goes backwards. It's not a closed campus, I won't say that word, but it goes backwards, okay? And they already have the issues of the, of the road and the buildings out the backside, okay? I just have a concern with students on the 105 side having an outside access. I'm not sure if it's a valid concern, but it's a concern.
I'm gonna exercise the chair's prerogative, and Mr. Crowell's here. Mr. Crowell, would you like to say, make any comments about that?
Sorry, Mike, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
I'm sorry, who? Come, come to the mic, Mr. Crowell, I'm getting old and can hardly hear.
Mr. Husband had asked me about that before the meeting, and I told him that I'd take it back to my APs to see if they saw any concern with it. You know, I, it looks beautiful. It'll cover us up in the rain. I, I don't know if any more are gonna go there, but I, I will ask and see if anybody on my staff sees a concern with it.
You know, my guess, knowing Conroe High a little bit, and just off the top of my head here, I'm not sure if the traffic flow of the students comes to the front of the building, except for after-school, or, or...
But, Dr. Stockton, it most certainly will now that you're connecting those gymnasiums with a covered walkway. You know what I'm saying?
Not gymnasiums go inside, then connect inside.
No, no, they don't. You can't connect to the rest of the school, except how you can right now. They connect to each other, but it does not run a parallel inside walkway inside the school. school.
My point, though, is, correct me if I'm wrong, if the students are in PE or athletics, they're not in the gyms, they retreat back into the locker rooms which actually in that main corridor, so I don't know.
I don't know that it will either.
I don't know if they'll come out through the gym, go around, and then come, because the classes are set back, my guess would be you won't see much traffic during the school day. That's my guess. Mr. Crowe, you know the building better than I do.
And that's where we are right now, but again, I'm willing to go back and talk to my staff to see if they see anything. I personally, I don't, I'm like you, we're coming out of the locker rooms in the flow because a lot of the flow out of there is back, outback doors going over to the other buildings. Even now with another building over there that's being acquired, that's another reason to flow backwards.
Would it be fair to suggest that if there were, if there was to be an issue, that you'd administratively handle the traffic?
I think it'd be simple to put an administrator out there to watch that flow.
Dr. Heinz, you have a second?
I think one of the challenges with Conroe High is the super, the challenge, one option that remains, not a, needed thoroughfare to close that off, but that's not an option. No, you don't go outside.
Right, that was my comment.
You'd have to come back interior, because supervision is reality of how many places can be, so that's an option, closing that off during school.
And that's simply done by whoever's teaching the PE class, is one of them is posted at that door saying, no, you got to go through the inside route. That's the best solution right there, could take care of that real easy.
I certainly like the fact that, the way it looks, number one, and number two, the way, you know, it provides covered waiting time for parental pickup for whoever picking up in front of the school the way they do. And so by no means am I, I want you to take it wrong, but I'm questioning whether it's a beautiful layout. I just, you know, 105 is a different street than Wilson, and we're fortunate enough to have Wilson under control right now, but, you know, you're building an entrance and you're moving the front office around for security purposes, it seems defeating to have the kids out in front of that area. Is that, I mean, I can see that, I'm not sure it's a real concern, but I just thought it worthy of mentioning, and if it's, if we need to table it and allow Mr. to, I don't know what that will do to our time schedule, and if it'll wreck it, you know, I understand that.
I'll offer a comment, Mr. Husband. I think with what Dr. Heinz's suggestion, I think we can handle it.
And I'll offer the comment and direct response to yours, sir, and that is that you've got, you can make any choice you want. If it's best for the campus and the administration and the purpose of the school to not have that, you know, it serves a visual purpose, but our true first function was to try and link the front doors of the concession to the front doors of the, of the main entry by continuation of a walkway which is presently already there on the backside of the auditorium, and then provide some measure of weather cover. But having said that, there's no functional reason other than that that insists on it. I'll say this, it seems like you have at least three options. One would be to say, that's not necessary, we can accomplish what we need without that, if that's your pleasure. The other is to say, no, that works, that's fine. And third, if the desire were to seek another internal mechanism that was inside the building, you could potentially enclose that corridor.
I don't have a concern if our administration doesn't have a concern.
Very good.
I thought it worthy of noting, and not trying to disrupt the program, but if Mike's comfortable, if Dr. Stockton's comfortable, I'm comfortable.
Thank you, thank you for the comments.
Okay.
With your permission, may I offer an introduction of some of the folks that are involved in this project?
You certainly may.
I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Steve Santos, project manager with PBK, Mr. Greg Louvier, who was the designer that worked on those few sketches that we were able to accomplish for you, and Ms. Kristen Rinker, who is also in our design department. And they represent just a lot, a few of the many people at PBK that have been involved on this project and others, but the truth is, I almost contribute nothing to that team. These are the people that really do what I get to talk about in front of you, so thank you very much.
Do we, we need a motion?
Yes.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye? Raise your hand. Okay, motion carries. Now we are down to the bond referendum update, Dr. Stockton.
Mr. Burns.
Okay. Conroe High School additions renovations is about 95, 97 percent complete, and we're down to the real finish here. This is the, one of the main corridors upstairs. This is the existing, to the right is the existing building.
Back up just a minute, Mr. Burns, back up just a second. Okay. Thought I saw the bathrooms outside there, we've always, we started doing that in the younger grades.
Anyway, the wall on the right used to be the existing building, north side of the building. This is one of the new science prep rooms, science classroom. This is the new LGI finishing up. York Junior High is about 83 to 88 percent complete. This is the commons area, the bus loading. This is one of the science classrooms, science prep room, typical classroom. This is the commons area, interior shot.
Should I send the library?
Yes, I'm sorry, right, you're right. Football field. Tom Cox Senior Intermediate. It's also about 83 to 87 percent complete. It's cleaned up very well. New front entrance with a second set of security doors. This is the commons area, restrooms, the library, waiting for the casework to arrive, installation. Sports complex is now about 92, 96 percent complete. The front entrance to the auditorium, this is inside of the auditorium looking out toward the parking lot. This is reception area of the auditorium. The coping showed up, the beginning of the week is now being set. They still anticipate having water in by August 1st. Just the shots of the home side of the stadium. The new scoreboard was erected last week.
Let me also point out, scoreboard was, no taxpayers' dollars used for scoreboard, we sold advertising. Our sponsors are very excited to be on the scoreboard.
How many were sold and how many are left available?
The football scoreboard is sold out.
And how many would it accommodate in terms of advertising?
There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 boards on each scoreboard.
And there'll be two scoreboards?
Yes.
Okay.
One at Woodford Spang Stadium, one at Morehead Stadium, they're identical. And then in the auditorium, we have, on the video board, sold that out, and that has one, two, three, four, five, six sponsors. On the results board, we have two slots left, and that also has six sponsors. So the sales of those are extremely well.
Are the, is everybody in administration aware that the auditorium is attracted to swim meets that University of Houston used to get?
We have done, we've had great success, Sam Ferria's in the back there, it's great success with the interest from other groups and competitions to come to the auditorium, and at some point we'll have a completed report to give you, but it's going extremely well.
I'm sorry, Mr. Burns.
This is the concession area of the home sign. This is some shots from the stadium toward, overlooking the auditorium toward the kind of like a southeast, more of the center portion of the field. This is one of the locker rooms, looking back toward the auditorium. Armstrong Elementary is about 70 percent complete. If you go by, you start to see the shape of the building now. This is the library exterior of it. This is the interior framework and sheet rock going on. By the way, the interior classrooms have all been, have been painted and ceiling tile, or ceiling grids going in. The custodial maintenance central warehouse and transportation, this is the transportation building, it's about 85 percent, so about 85 percent complete. This is the interior of the transportation facility. This is the maintenance warehouse loading dock. Another shot. This is the backside, and that's it.
Any questions?
Any questions?
I have a question, when did you start doing the bond referendum reports? First year you started doing?
903, I think, what?
Yes.
So 3.
What are we going to do with that?
What I'm just saying, that's.
Thank you.
I'd have to ask Bobby, I'd have to ask Bobby his first, his first bond referendum report, maybe. I think I'm going to let him know.
Item 6.
I'm sorry.
We skipped around, I apologize, Dr. Brown.
Okay, well, I was thinking that, we're just getting ready to do something else up there for. Item 6A, tentative schedule of events for sales, series 2008, Dr. Stockton.
Mr. Cox, I'll call you at this point to introduce that item.
Dr. Brown, members of the board, Dr. Stockton. Recommend that the Board of Trustees approve a tentative schedule of events for the sale of fixed-rate series 2008 school bonds and appoint the financing team for the bond sale.
So moved.
Second.
The, we're going to be selling 85 million of 2000, from the 2008 bond referendum. I would like to point out that this includes about 2.6 million for buses and technology. That 2.6 million will be paid off in less than seven years based on the preliminary plan for the bonds, so I feel that's one of the things we wanted to make sure that we took care of. In addition to RBC Capital Markets, the district's recommended finance team is presented here. As you can see on the list, Mr. Frank Ildabrando and Mr. Ryan O'Hara are here this evening to present some information on the bond sale and answer any questions that you might have, okay? I'd like to turn it over to Ryan O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Dr. Stockton, members of the board, Ryan O'Hara, Frankie Ildabrando is out there in the audience. We prepared a brief presentation to kind of go over the first installment for the 2008 bond referendum. First, congratulations on a successful sale, and we appreciate your vote of confidence in approving our agreement earlier tonight. Page one, what we like to do is always give you an update on the bond market. This is the BBI index of 20 municipal bonds, it's published, it's a weekly index through the bond buyer newspaper. Right now we're at a 453, probably a more meaningful graph is what we've been experiencing here in recent months. Page two looks at the bond buyer, goes back to November 1 of 2007. If you look, we've seen a lot of volatility this year, the, if you've opened up the Wall Street Journal, you've seen a lot of volatility in the markets this year. It's primarily due to the subprime market that we've been looking at, and if you look mid-January, we were down at a 415 on the bond buyer index, that's within 10 basis points of all-time lows, but by the time of end of February, we got up to a 511, so basically a 1 percent or 100 basis point move in the market over a brief period of time in our, in our market. We've since stabilized, we've been in the 460 range for five weeks, we just now got down to the 453 range, so we think going into this election year cycle that we're going to see some stability. The Fed has moved rather quickly in that regard, so we think the interest rate environment's going to be very good for our upcoming sell. Page three is, let me get there, what do I need to hit? There we go. This is a lot of numbers here, this is the, basically the left-hand side of the screen is the current bond indebtedness for the district. Middle section there is we are also, along with this issuance of the new money from the recent authorization, we do have the ability to refinance some maturities, about $12 million in maturities from your 1998 issue. We've been precluded from doing these prior because of tax law, but right now these bonds are currently callable, so we can go ahead and include them into the transaction. And you'll see that the yellow column in savings there, we're going to actually generate about $865,000 in savings off of refinancing about $12 million in bonds. We're going to try and structure that savings in fiscal years 2010 in order to get, give us the maximum impact on debt service tax rate relief in that year, so we're going to concentrate the savings there. Columns next to that are the proposed structure for the $85 million that Mr. Cox was referring to, and the interest portion, in this, in this analysis, we're assuming interest at 5 percent, we expect to be much below that when we go to sell. Page four is simply the scheduled events we're adhering to. We are going to start submitting our applications for the permanent school fund guarantee into this month. We'll have to wait here back from the TEA the first two weeks of the month, but we will be here for your June 17 meeting to offer up the actual rates that night, and I think the market's going to be looking good for us, but I'll open up and entertain any questions you might have for us at this time.
Mr. Tuskman, is your motion still good?
Yes, sir.
The same, your second? Okay, any questions?
What's the amount of the bonds that are being sold? Again, I'm sure it's here somewhere.
85 million?
85 million.
That's in the new money portion.
This is approximately one-half of the first year bond needs, but we split it into two sales, we expect to do another sale of approximately the same size in January, February, to fund our first year needs. The reason we cut it in half was to manage our debt service, it was going to have too big an initial impact, so we needed to spread, split that up.
What if all the rates go up during that time? What happens then?
Well, long-term, we'll pay more interest. Of course, they might go down too, they're headed down, so. But I will tell you that if we were to sell all of it now, we would experience an immediate bigger tax impact than we're going to experience.
Thank you all for your help and your wisdom.
Any other questions?
Mr. Cox, all the buses that we're buying, will they, are all air-conditioned?
Yes, all, since, for the last few years, that's become a standard now.
Okay. Any other discussion, question? If not, have a motion in a second, all those in favor, raise your hand.
Thank you all, we'll see you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Dr. Stockton, item 6B.
6B is our financial report. Mr. Rice taking his way to the podium.
Dr. Stockton, since we do such a good job of doing all our homework, why don't we give Mr. Rice the night off?
Don't move. I know it's information.
Okay, it's information, okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice, for your, thank you for staying and being prepared.
I can't believe that you're going to get.
They're saving you from Mr. Tuft.
And I had studied so hard, I had all these questions.
Item 7 is executive session, so a closed session of the board will be held on matters contained in the notice of this meeting as authorized by Section 551.072, 551.074, the Texas Open Meetings Act. Should the board determine that any final action, final decision, or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such closed session or executive meeting or session, then such final action, final decision, or final vote shall be at either this public meeting upon the reconvening of this public meeting, or at a subsequent public meeting of the board upon notice thereof as the board shall determine. A closed session of the board will now be held, it is 7:56. All those in favor, aye? Those who oppose, stay.
You got to raise your hand.
Those who oppose, stay. And, but we are allowing you to hand out the plump, is correct?
Yes.
We have to.
There's precedent for that, Dr. Popman did that after he.
So you're going to be just like Joby, is that what you're saying?
Hmm?
You're going to be just like Joby, is that what?
I'm going to hang around, I'm not leaving, I'm just hanging around.
I could see Joby.
Everyone, I think you will, I won't be there at graduation, so.
Give me a great time.
We're in California, so, thank you.
Yeah, we just happen to be going to the, to see greatest Raiders.